All right, just give me a second here. All right. So I'd like to call the planning commission meeting for February 1st, 2022 to order. The first order of business is public comments. And believe, is there anybody who is there that wants to speak? And if so, please raise your hand. So Rita can see you.
If we want to just give it a second, if you would like to give public comment, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the screen and we can promote you. The panelist.
We'd be glad to hear from anyone. There is a three minute limit.
Oh, I see no hands raised at this time.
All right. So is there any discussion on the planning commission meeting minutes? No discussion, no comments, hearing none. I will let the minutes show that they were approved by the commission. Agenda item is the land acknowledgement. Debbie, do do we have any information on that?
Yes.
Wonderful.
So I think the the planning commissioner has to be a little bit patient because I've been tasked with looking into this further. And reaching out more to the tribes, but before I reach out to the tribes, I need to do some homework myself. And as our D E I consultant would say, you do nothing for them without them. So again, I need to do some homework before I reach out to the tribal members and I need to try and identify any tribal members who may live in Kenmore because that might be appropriate to involve also. So I've got some homework to do, so be patient and stay tuned.
Okay. Is there any questions for Debbie on this? See, seeing none, I assume, which is always a bad thing to do, that we're looking at a couple of months before you're going to get back to us. Is that fair, Debbie?
At least, yeah.
Okay, well, I just wanted to put it off or we'll just tickle it for two months from now and see where everybody's at. How's that? And if it's the same report, we can live with that, I guess. So the next item on the agenda is the revised housing element. And I believe Lori is just smiling there, ready to go. And we're, you're going to walk us what you want us to make some, give you some direction tonight. I take it. There you are. Now I can hear you.
Okay, well, you did a lot of work on my computer updating, checking everything. So please let me know if there's an audio problem tonight because at that point then we're going to have to really go to the experts. We've done what we can.
Well, you sound great tonight.
Oh, good. Oh, good. Perfect. Um, well, so as you said, tonight, we are going to talk about the amendments to the housing element. And I, I thought that your approach at your last meeting with the land use element worked well. Again, to go, I think you went page by page, looking at the language and and calling out exceptions that you wanted to talk more about. Again, you don't need to wordsmith or feel like you're doing your final adoption tonight. You are not. You are just giving me general direction to make amendments before we bring back the full element to you, which we'll definitely see and give a preliminary recommendation on before we go to public hearing. There are two upcoming activities that I wanted to alert you to before we get started this evening. One is that for your next meeting on February 15th, we've arranged a panel of folks in the development community who have been trying to do transit oriented development in our TOD overlay zone. And the development services director suggested that we convene this group, not to talk about their specific projects, but to get their input generally on the standards. As you know, we're talking about making the standards mandatory rather than an overlay zone and also talking about potentially expanding some of the standards to the downtown. Those were decisions you made last summer and then confirmed again in January. But this will provide an opportunity for us to hear from folks to see their and understand their perspectives. So we have five people confirmed. I'm waiting to hear from a couple of folks. We have a series of questions that we've prepared to get the conversation going. So we would ask them their perspectives and give you all a chance to ask them questions. So you have a better understanding of how they are approaching work in the TOD and issues that they may have seen. So that's one.
Could I ask that the list of questions be provided to the commissioners like a week in advance? Is that possible?
The questions will be attached to your agenda. I'm actually mailing them, emailing them out to the panelists tomorrow. And so they will have the questions in advance so they can, you know, prepare their remarks.
Well, you're going in and out again. I'm sorry to tell you that.
Oh, don't tell me. Um, so the one thing the tech folks said, if you can't hear me, I have to turn my video off because that will give me more bandwidth. So I am going to look for your thumbs up. Shall I turn the camera off so that you can hear me in a better way?
Well, we can hear you now just as soon as I said something.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll keep going, but you know what the next outcome is going to be. You can hear me and we could talk about it, but I won't be on camera. So anyway, so that was one thing I wanted to mention. And again, we will send the questions out with the planning commission agenda so you know what the panelists have received. So you'll be ready for that. The other thing I wanted to tell you about, so as you know, our regional directives are asking us to look at missing middle housing. And I think it's likely that the legislature may even get involved in this discussion during this short session. But we've also heard from the community about concerns that they have about compatibility. So we have hired the expert Opticoast Design, who coined the term missing middle housing to help us craft zoning code standards that will address compatibility issues. Commissioner Vanderland, you recall that we had quite a bit of work done with the ADU project to try to figure out scope and scale. That's basically what Opticoast Design will be doing for us. They're going to give us their insights and input knowing that compatibility with single family development is really important. So they'll talk about building size, building width, building height and give and review our standards before you all see them. So we hope that will help the community feel comfortable that really we've crafted something that will allow missing middle housing to come to Kenmore in a way that people are comfortable with. So those were the two things I wanted to let you know about. And unless you have questions, I think we could just start into the housing element. And again, if you want to do it page by page by exception, I personally thought that worked well. It's of course your choice, how you wish to proceed.
I think that will be fine. We're used to that. Okay. And the one thing I would like to say to all, let's try to keep on one topic on the page do around and once we're done, then we can move to another topic so that poor Lori and the rest of us like me do not get confused.
I've got my pen, ready for action.
All right, I have mine too. Tracy, I see your hand.
Before we move on, Lori, this is a question about Opticoast. Will the planning commission have an opportunity to interact with them? Or will they interface just with staff?
I think at this point, we're just having them interface with staff. We did send you a link on, I think it's on February 24th. Karen Perolak, who's the wife of Dan Perolak, who is Mr. Missing Middle, will be giving a lecture at the U Dub. And so we forwarded a link and hope you can listen in on that presentation. I think that would be very helpful.
And just a related question, since you brought it up, are you, is, are there any plans to send that link out to the broader community? I know it's a U Dub thing, right?
It's
the community is aware of it?
We have it currently in a draft of the e-news that will be going out in the next couple of weeks. So that's in draft, so I can't give you the final information, but we did include the link in our article for the e-news.
Yeah, thank you.
I just would like to say that the scope we have with Opticoast is very limited. Typically, if they go into a community, they, you can pay them a lot of money to do sort of what they call a deep dive. And I think we're not at the start of the project. We're sort of in the middle of it. You've given really good direction and this is just to kind of get the perspectives from the missing middle experts that on the compatibility issue and to review the regulations to make sure there is compatibility. So I, I know it would have been nice to have, have, you know, a representative come to the planning commissioning and maybe give a speech or something. But I'm trying to be mindful of budget right now.
Any more comments before we start? See no hands. Lori, it's page one. Do you have any comments, Lori, to start us off?
Uh, well, I, I can tell you that you've already seen the amendments that are in gray and that there aren't any of those on page one, but as we move forward, you will see those. And those are amendments that you've previously considered and given direction on. There are a few changes to those as we were putting the whole thing together. There's also language from the C countywide planning policies, the CPPs that are displacement is a significant issue in the countywide planning policies as our policies and guidance about diversity, equity, inclusion. We have again, sort of similarly to the land use element, we have language about the countywide growth center. And just to let you know, this time for the housing element, we were able to send the draft out to Shannon Kelly Ray, who is our D E I consultant. The D E I task force isn't set up to the point where they could help us by reviewing these materials, but Shannon did. She, she went through it and she had a lot of great comments. And I have incorporated, if not most, if not all of the comments that she made. So just so you know that that has been reviewed for, from a D E I perspective. So those are probably the comments I would make.
Okay. Is there any questions? And then suggestions, Tracy?
So this is on policy H 1.1.2, which seems to me about infrastructure. And I wondered if it made sense to add to include pedestrian safety. Is it something that we've talked about a lot and is important to our community? So I was thinking, provide regular and appropriate levels of investment in transportation, pedestrian safety, surface water and parks maintenance and improvements. And I wanted to leave it general because I don't mean just, you know, sidewalks as a solution, but it could be, you know, adding crosswalks with, with flashing lights and flags or, you know, roundabouts or whatever. But I wondered if that would be appropriate under this policy.
It's certainly fine with staff.
We couldn't hear you. That was what my thumbs were doing.
Oh, I said that that is fine with staff to add that language and assuming that I don't see any objection from the other commissioners, I'll go ahead and add that.
All right, next item. Anyone else have something that they would like to comment or bring up on page one? Tracy?
So this is on objective H 1.3. And it's the consider and mitigate for the displacement of existing residents. I see that there have been some changes to this, which I greatly appreciate. And I, I made this comment before I read through the rest of the document and saw the other either objective or policy that is related. But when I read this at first, consider still felt to me like it should be stronger. I really like to mitigate. But consider on first read still had the kind of flavor that Derek mentioned last time of being like, kind of a feeling like well, thoughts and prayers, what kind of thing, we'll, you know, we'll think about it in passing. So I, I wondered if it could be worded in a toothier way, maybe based on the, what appeared later in the document. I guess with my overall feeling being as a community, and I think that we do care, really care about our people. And we've shown that, you know, in many ways, like with apportioning some ARPA funds as direct cash payments to people and things like that. I think we do. And so I'm thinking about ways that we can really put that into like toothy language for this.
Any, go ahead.
I, I was just going to say, I, I appreciate that comment very much. I, I want to just throw out a scenario because I, I think it's worth considering. So assume that you have a, a couple of houses and you have a new project coming in, a new large project. I'm not sure in every circumstance you, I, I'm not sure you always mitigate for every change. That would be quite a burden on the city. And, and if the planning commission wants to take out, consider and just say mitigate, that is obviously a recommendation, but I do think there are circumstances where mitigation for displacement is not reasonable.
Other commissioners? What's your thoughts on this? Derek?
Yeah, I, I can see where Tracy is coming from, but I also see the other side of it as well. I, I feel for both sides. I, I too, when I read this the first time through was thinking, well, consider to me just sounds like one ear and out the other and thoughts and prayers. But the mitigate is in there and yeah, I just, I don't know if, if we want to put in stronger wording or if we want to hope that our city does, you know, take due diligence with this initiative. I don't know. I'm on the fence about that. But at the same time, I, you know, the case you mentioned two houses for a bigger project that solves a bigger problem. As they say in one of my favorite movies, for the good of the many, sometimes needs to be done to move forward.
Okay, Mike and then Christina after Mike.
Yeah, I share the same sentiments I've heard from a couple of other folks here. When I read through this, I had the same reactions, you know? How do we put more teeth to it? The more I, but we end up think about it, I think, isn't it a reality that as we redevelop, particularly as we talk about bringing in replacing single family, for instance, with multifamily or with middle housing, that we are going to displace. We can't redevelop unless existing homes or existing property is changed. So I think it then comes down to an issue of what can the city realistically accomplish? And I think that's going to vary from situation to situation. So I think allowing some latitude here, and I think the word consider makes that possible. Our objective may be to mitigate whenever possible, but I think the truth is it may not always be possible. So the situation then becomes, what do we do? Do we say if there are folks that are ever going to be displaced, that nothing can change? I don't think that's realistic.
Christina?
Um, just because I, I am unsure, no. What would be a situation, an example of a situation where the city would have to mitigate or not mitigate? Uh, what would cause a displacement of an existing resident? Would this be a resident of one of the parks? Would this be a single family home? What would the situation be where a person would have to have be displaced? Does that makes, does that question make sense?
Yes, I think what we're talking about here is a case where a zoning change, for example, might result in, in a person who owned a property wanting to develop their property and therefore asking the existing residents if to move, basically. So the city wouldn't be displacing people, but the action that the city took could result in displacement of people. And I'll, I'll give you a good example and then talk about how the city has handled it. For example, the manufactured housing communities had high density zoning on them. And there was interest in some property owners to develop those properties, which would have displaced those communities. That's a very, in some cases, that was a very large community. So it wasn't that the city was displacing, but the zoning rules in effect ended up in a situation that could displace. The city took the approach of saying, we want to preserve, there were zoning changes, et cetera. But there also was an acknowledgement that if it were a circumstance where, where a property owner somehow was given the right to do an increase to redevelop to a larger project, they would have to do a relocation plan. They would have to provide information to the existing residents. There was discussion of whether existing residents should retain a right to rent units in a new building. So those are all the kinds of things that were considered in a discussion of displacement. So it's not the city asking somebody to move out, but it's a city action that may result in an outcome that would put people out of their current residence. Did that help?
Um, Mario?
Um, and thank you, Lori, for, and thank you, Christina, for asking that question because I have the same one that you just made. I think, you know, in hearing the conversation, we've all acknowledged that displacement can happen. So in my mind, I think it's more on planning for mitigation, right? We want to prevent it, but we need to plan for it because we know it can happen. And even thinking about situations where if there's a development that's going to be taking place in a lower dense, in, in a, in a parcel that is currently lower density than what it's going to be developed for, that might actually, if you think, increase the opportunity for BIPOC communities or other groups in order to be housed as opposed to who may already be residing there. So I mean, if there's, it could almost go two ways. It's not just BIPOC community members or other marginalized groups that would be displaced. It could actually be the opposite where there's an increased opportunity for folks to, to be housed within our communities. So I, I'd like for us to consider that as well. And thinking within policy H 1.3.1, just right below of not just seeking to promote diversity, but seeking to retain diversity as well. Right? So not just diversity when it comes to cultural groups, right? But we also think about economic groups as well, or, you know, groups with living with different abilities. So I, I would request that we make that addition.
Okay, so just so we're clear, let's talk about the item in 1.3, I think the change in one, I mean, one and 1.3.1 that was just proposed could be taken next. So I saw two hands go up. Tracy, I think you're it's.
Okay, yeah. Um, so I want to be clear that I am not suggesting that we write a policy that suggests that no one will ever be displaced and that we will do everything we can to keep everyone where they are. Like, I think that's an extreme that I feel like we're tending to. When we think about like, oh, people are going to, well, I guess what I, I think there's a whole middle gray area between, ah, displacement's going to happen. We'll just let the market forces do it. They will. And no one will ever be displaced. There's a whole gray area in there. And I feel like how we communicate about this tells, like says something about what our values are and how we're going to act on those values. And I think what I'm looking for is something that's in that gray area that says retaining our residents is a priority for this community. And I don't, I, this is closer to what we had last time we looked at this, but I feel like there's something about it that feels like it still falls a little short to me. I don't have a word to suggest. I'm not suggesting take out, consider and just go with mitigate. It feels like there needs, I, I feel like I want something before mitigate. And maybe it's plan or plan to, you know, put policy in place to retain our residents. If we know whenever possible, something like that, I think is, is where I'm, I'm going.
Thank you, Tracy. Christina?
Um, what just popped into my mind about the verbiage of it, sorry, I'm not trying to wordsmith either, but you basically said it when you said plan for, so maybe prioritize and plan for retention of existing residents and consider and mitigate. So you're, we are stressing the importance of, or how we feel about the retention, but also considering and mitigating for it. So it sounds more thoughtful. It is more thoughtful. I also agree with Mary Ellen. She said, we need to plan for that. There has to be situations that have solutions that are already in place or possible when those types of things happen. But plan and prevent or plan and, and, and.
Remember, you don't have to wordsmith.
Yeah, yeah.
Help you on that.
Prioritize. There you go. Prioritize and plan for retention of existing residents.
Right. I, I've got that.
So I think Tracy and, and Christina kind of summed everything up. So is that where we are? Just head nod would be fine. Is there any other comments to the, so Lori, though that comment is, you, you've got that based on what we've been working on, right?
Right. I have prioritize and plan for retention of existing residents. Consider and mitigate for the displacement of residents when considering zoning changes or capital projects. And then the last sentence would remain the same. Is that, is that generally where we're headed?
Generally where we're headed. I believe that's it. So the other topic was 3.1. And that was promote and retain. Is there any further discussion on that item? Is there any, anyone object? Hearing none, we're going to, I don't think we have a problem with down at the bottom there. So without further ado, we'll go to page two. Comments, Mike?
Yes. 1.4, I think it's four, that reads prepare and implement development and design standards that address compatibility with surrounding development. I think I understand the intent here, Lori, but I think the word surrounding development. Maybe this would be better if it was surrounding or adjacent neighborhood. Something along those lines. The word development puts into my mind, you know, we're, we're trying to make a development compatible with an, with an existing development. I don't think that's what we said.
Yeah, I would, I would concur. I kind of got the same thing when I read through that.
I was, I was, I was actually imagining something happening on my street where you've got two gravel lots competing with each other to try and look like each other.
Tracy, I think you're next.
I had the same thing jumped out at me, Mike. And I think I know what this is trying to get at, but what I was thinking was that, I think what we want is development that's compatible with our community vision, not, you know, and, and oftentimes that will be what's already there. But sometimes it might not be. And so I was thinking about things like, you know, our community vision or our people oriented development, like the things, ideas that we've been tossing around is what our, our vision are. And I, I keep thinking about, like Derek said, like, there are some developments that I, I personally don't want us to match. Like, I think that those developments are leading us down a wrong place. And so it's a standard for me that doesn't, I don't think it gets at exactly what we, what we want.
Okay, any further comments? So it sounds as though staff is at the position of having to expand that paragraph a bit to encompass some of our thoughts. Is that?
It's, it sounded, what I heard was that there were two approaches. One, to address compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. And the other approach was to address compatibility with the community vision. And I heard surrounding neighborhood, meaning sort of the existing conditions. And the community vision, having a broader look at where the city was going to head. I don't know, I don't know, I think they're two different things.
I think the language here, the way I read it, I'm wondering if it doesn't encompass both of those thoughts. Because I do agree, we want it to be consistent with the vision. But wouldn't consistent with land use and community design elements and goals and policies encompass that thought?
Yes, it would.
It's just a little more nebulous, Sean.
Consistent with the vision expressed in or through land use and community design elements, goals and policies, so that make people happy? Clear?
I, I think there's a majority here that wants something a little more clear and, and to the point on this topic. So I'm leave the chief wordsmith or to Smith. Is there any objection to that? Any for the comment, it's your last chance to say something about 1.4, okay. So is, so we're past that, so we're down to 1.8 and 1.9. Any comments? Tracy?
And what policy H 1.7, I guess.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It says ensure critical area regulations provide sufficient buffer. This is an area where I feel like the policy is reasonable, but in practice, we fall short of this policy and I don't, that concerns me. I know that there are variances granted for developments such that developments can encroach into buffers.
Very rarely. I want to emphasize that very rarely.
And I also know that many of the buffers that we have in our code are adequate for water quality concerns, but most of them are far from adequate for wildlife habitat and habitat connectivity. And that I know, I have seen with my own eyes, development that's happening that disconnects ecosystems from their surrounding ecosystem because we're allowing development that's kind of encroaching on all sides of a critical area. So I, I don't know how to address any of that, but I feel like, again, the policy reads fine, but then in practice, I see it play out in ways that I don't feel like they align with the policy. So I don't know if that means making it toothier, or if it means the code needs to be looked at again. But I have concerns about that policy.
Yeah, I, I might give for the newer commissioners, just a history of the critical area and shoreline rules. So in 20, I think it was 2018, we were required by the state to update our critical area regulations. And in fact, the state had to approve our shoreline regulations. And because our shoreline regulations include our critical area regulations, basically the state approved all of our critical area regulations. The Department of Ecology looked at it along with other state departments. And we, and determined that we were consistent with best available science. And we had a consultant who looked at the science, certainly ecology knows the science. So I sense and appreciate the frustration, but I am hesitant to say that the city's current regulations, which were just adopted, are not consistent with environmental protection.
Well, if I may, I, I appreciate that a lot. But I think what's being said is, with that said, that doesn't seem like it's going far enough right now. And we can appreciate that's all been approved and it's gone through the process, but maybe some of us might feel that it's there, but it's just not enough. And I think that's what you're hearing.
And if I may, I think what I heard Tracy say was that she was fine with the policy, it was the practice. So it, you know, we, we are writing right now the policy and I think it's a difference in, in how it's implemented and where development occurs. So I think what I heard was the policy is fine, but in practice, I think Tracy is saying this, she's seen examples where it, she, she's concerned, so that's on the implementation side, not the policy side. I'm not dismissing Tracy's concerns at all, I'm just trying to figure out how to address that in a policy context.
More, okay, go ahead Derek.
You know, I have a question for Tracy, I guess, are, are you talking about continuity of and connectivity of green spaces, for instance, and so forth, how they interconnect with each other? Like.
Yeah, I did, I did bring that up in my comment, I, I guess could, to kind of tie it back more closely to this policy where it says, you know, it, it's a policy to provide sufficient buffer widths. Yes, buffers are a science-based construct. And there is best available science to tell us what those different lengths should be. And in our code, there are allowances for people to build and to get variances for buffer widths, so a development can encroach into a buffer for various reasons, it's in the code, it happens. I'm looking at a development right now where they're encroaching into the buffer. So this sort of thing is happening. It's not something that this policy is stopping. That's what I'm talking about. And, and then the general concern about our critical areas is they don't just need a buffer around them, they do need to be connected to a larger ecosystem. So that, I think maybe that's what you were hearing me say Derek, which isn't necessarily addressed in this policy, just something that
Yeah.
is important.
Yeah, I was just thinking, generally like the way Swamp Creek Green Space interconnects with the Brightwater Area Green, Green Space and the Twin Springs Area Green Space and so forth. I know the deer have no problem getting to my fruit trees in the backyard. But that's my own issue.
We can write fruit trees into the planning. More comments?
I, I think it'd be cool to see more of that and to have that focused on, but I think that's something that's way outside of what we're looking at here, that's more of like a city park focus or a some sort of creating, you know, a really, I mean, that's a great idea, it's a great thing to look at and focus on. And I think there should be more of that because that's just common sense. I mean, can't expect a deer to go from one park to another, bear to be chasing fish upstream when he's got to cross a street and wait for a school zone, I mean, that's just not going to happen. But but yeah, I don't know if that's where we address it here. But if you're talking about a particular development where you're seeing encroached upon spaces that are not supposed to be or have variances for, then that's something completely different and I'm on board with taking a look at that.
More comments? Go ahead Tracy, why don't you sum up?
Oh, no, I was ready to move on to a different one.
Okay, we need to get a little.
We need, you want to sum up on this one before I move on?
Well, I would like you to sum up.
You'd like me to sum up?
Simply stated.
Yeah. Well, maybe thinking on it a bit more is, I, I don't know if there is a way to tweak a policy such that the code then can be strengthened, maybe that's what I would like. Because I do think that this buffer width issue, I mean, I've seen it be an issue several times, not just once. I, I guess I just don't know, maybe, maybe the problem is bigger than this policy and it does need to be addressed in other policies.
I think that's a challenge, I think that's a challenge you're facing, Tracy, if you look at what the goal is for this, but in the context of this particular policy, it's regarding residential neighborhoods. So I think you, I, like I said, I, I'm not dismissing your concerns about, about this. I'm just saying that in the context of where this policy is and the objective and the goal that it's under, it's sort of more focused on residential neighborhoods. But if there's a way that you can translate your concerns that then align with the broader objective and goal, then that's, maybe that's something to consider. So I guess I'm trying to help you figure out a way to narrow this down a little bit to be relevant to this particular goal, objective and policy.
I very much appreciate that, and I think I perhaps muddied the water by starting to talk about habitat connectivity and I didn't really mean to, because I know this is about buffers and about critical areas that are in our residential neighborhoods. And the thing is, is that's where I see some of these buffer encroachments happening is in residential development. So that like, there'll be a plat. And so instead of building three houses to stay far away from the critical area, like, we're gonna, we're packing in all the houses that we can and encroaching into the buffer so that we can put in five houses, and you know, I see it happening and despite this policy. So I don't know, like, how to change those policies so that that doesn't happen. And maybe, maybe we, maybe we want that to happen, I don't know, I don't want that to happen. But maybe that's not a, a value of this community, I.
So may I suggest something if this would be okay with the commission is that we summarize, we share your concern Tracy and would ask you to work with Debbie and Lori to try to ameliorate your concerns in a part with, in this 1.7 and 1.8 issues and maybe come up with some wordsmithing that could be brought back to the commission. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, that's what we're doing then. Is there anything on 1.8 and 1.9 that we need to talk further about? Hearing none, we'll go to page three. Five dash two. Tracy?
I wondered for H 2.25. Yes, that one, the support a range of housing options. I noticed that last phrase was taken out, which I'm fine with, but I wondered, and, but then it felt like it kind of, just the sentence kind of dropped off in my mind. And I wondered if, if the reason that we might want to do this is so that homeless persons and families stay sheltered, if that is the goal, and if adding something like that would be appropriate. Support efforts by providers, oh wait, no, support a range of housing options and services to help homeless persons and families stay sheltered, rather than just saying help them.
Stay sheltered is yours sort of suggestion, okay, Mike?
I like that. I was just putting an exclamation point on it.
Yeah, I think, I think that helps clarify, I think that's, yeah, stating the cause.
Any further comments? Is there any objection to that? Hearing none, we'll move on. Next item. Is there any more discussion on page three?
Yes.
Okay, Mike?
Items 3.1.1 and the one below it, 3.1.2. I'm wondering if there isn't some conflict here. When I look at 311, I read accommodate a ranging of how, a range of housing styles and types in appropriate location. But then below, I see allow a variety of housing types in all neighborhoods. That doesn't seem to me to be consistent. And I'm worried that when we spring in terms like all neighborhoods, what impact does that have really on our zoning? How would the city accomplish this? So I'm, I'm wondering if there isn't a way to really combine these two policies into, into one that holds to the accommodate a range in appropriate locations. And incorporates the ideas. Actually, I think that the whole 3.1.2 is, is really problematic. I'm not sure how you would effectively allow a variety of types in all neighborhoods and to ensure everyone can live in the neighborhood of their choice. That seems like a pretty tall order, I, how are we going to get the money to do that? I don't know if that's really a policy that we would want that we could realistically put forward. I, I do like the sentiment that's in 1.1.1, I think that covers it well. Well, I guess my proposal would just be to eliminate 3.1.2, unless somebody has something in there that needs to be prepared.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, Tracy?
I also wondered about policy H 3.1.2 in the context of our discussion about taking an incremental approach to missing, missing middle housing types. Which is, you know, making the decision that we're not extending all the housing types to all neighborhoods. So I did wonder about the compatibility of that policy with our, with the direction that we're going, just saying that to back makeup.
Nathan?
I saw the exact same thing and I was about to make the exact same comments as my colleagues here. I felt that 3.1.1 pretty much summarizes our approach and what we've been working on recently. And 3.1.2 conflicts that and the progress that we've made over the last several months. And also kind of like what Mike was saying, I had the same, the same thought in my head. It's very idealistic and almost impossible to promise that everyone can live in their neighborhood of choice. The idea is, is there that everyone should have access to their neighborhood of choice, but promising that they can live there, that's, that can be almost impossible considering a neighborhood where no house might be for sale. So I mean, putting that, I, the, the sentiment, I kind of got that, but the wording, I don't think brought that across. So I'm, I'm in favor of. I, the, the sentiment, I kind of got that, but the wording I don't think brought that across. So I'm, I'm in favor of um Mike's point about removing three point one point two.
Derek?
Uh, yeah, Nathan, you just gave me nightmares. Uh, the three point one two could be interpreted as a tent the second this goes into print.
Further comments? I'm, I'm hearing a majority want to take three point one point two out. Is there any objection? Hearing none. Lori, I think you got a clear one on that. So with that, unless anyone, oh, there's that hand, Tracy.
Thank you, Dwight. I wondered, just bouncing back to policy H three point one. Um, if, if we could add, um, it says the last sentence says, consider neighborhood compatibility as well as housing needs when applying zones, land use and development standards. I was wondering if we might add, um, consider neighborhood compatibility as well as uh surrounding and maybe housing needs surrounding and surrounding environmental conditions. And this comes back to my really wanting to find a grand, more granular way of figuring out where to put things. So that is something for the commission's consideration.
So I'd just like to remind the fellow commissioners that we're not wordsmithing her idea. We're just taking her idea and whether we want to ask the staff to make appropriate wordsmithing changes. Is there any comments about Tracy's suggestion? Are there any objections? Hearing none. Lori, there's your comment on that. Okay, so.
I like Tracy's words.
Oh, good.
I'm going to put it right in there.
That's wonderful. So um do before I see hands up, is it page four time? Page four, Tracy, I know that. Oh, you're being bad. Page four.
No, no, I'm not being bad. I actually do have a question about.
Oh, you do. I thought you were just playing with me.
No, no, Dwight, no. Not, not this time.
Page three, we're still on.
Okay, I just have a question about the whole objective H three point one. It says, plan for an adequate supply of land. And I'm wondering how, like, what does that mean? What to plan for an adequate supply of land, given that we have a finite supply of land? Does that question make sense?
Yes. So a plan for an adequate supply of land would mean the allowable densities on uh assigned to the land to make sure it, it's what, like when we do the urban growth capacity study, we have to determine how much vacant redevelopable land is there. Is there an adequate amount of land to accommodate how many people the county assigns to us for the 20 year period?
Okay, so it has to do with thinking about how much capacity we are going to put on the land. Okay, thank you.
As you know, I, I make notes as we go. So now are there no more, no more hands. That's messing with me. Page four.
I don't know if you can see me, Dwight.
Okay, I can see. Thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, on the objective statement, uh, I love parks, always support wanting more, you never have enough. But when we're talking about identify and support Kenmore's downtown, um, are we really thinking that park space is compatible with commercial civic cultural and high density housing uses and activity?
I, I think the concept would be, for example, the skate park, uh, the town square. Um, and, and actually the countywide growth center criteria talk about parks in the context of open space, but in, in Kenmore, it's more the, you know, the square.
So open space, I understand that, that this park is such an expansive.
Yeah, and on the, the topic of parks, I, I think even in downtown, like, like a pocket park might be appropriate, or like a, you know, in a small lot or something so that, you know, the people who are living there still need access to amenities like parks. I don't think they would be, you know, big sprawling, rambling parks or like, not like Wallace Swamp Creek Park, but certainly like a skate park or maybe a little pocket park. I, I think could be a part of a vibrant downtown.
Yeah, I, I also want to chime in there with the parks. Uh, public corridors are quite often considered a park or controlled as a park. Um, Burkham and Trail and all these railways that are becoming parks. Um, they're just, they're corridors, they're pedestrian ways. Um, so in that aspect, absolutely. I think that's what makes a great community is if we can get around without getting our cars.
No, I have no great objection to that. So if, if a majority of other people see park as meaning something like what I've been described, then I have no problem with it.
Mario?
Well, I think even in connection to this, thinking about the vision we have for development of this corridor, even how do we deal with traffic control? Because there's a lot of um usage of, of greenery to separate pedestrians or even cyclists from, you know, traffic. So I, I want to even have this kind of consider that that um, that idea of the park can mean so much more. It's just that idea of green space.
Further comments? So Lori, do you have enough to go on?
Yeah, I, I think what I'm hearing is that if we think about park in a broader context, not a large park, but maybe the Bergelman or the Water Walk or the town square that having park space downtown is something we're interested in. That's what I heard.
Does that sound right? Everyone, any objections? Hearing none. So more on page four. Okay, Nathan, you get to go first.
Uh, hi Lori, I had a question on three point two point one. I think that's right. Though right before, right after three point two, um, at the very end, it discusses providing multimodal transportation services and connections to those services. Um, what was meant by connections to those services?
It, it was uh trails, pedestrian paths, um bicycle paths, things that would get you to the transit or um the ferry or whatever the multimodal transportation was.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I just had a different interpretation in my mind. And so I was just trying to process what city staff had in mind in there.
Well, may I draw you out a little?
Yeah, right.
When you read that, what did you think it meant? I think that's the issue where we're going here.
Um, so connections, I didn't immediately jump to um what the Lori's definition here about um pathways or right of ways or uh roads or I'm not sure what else to call that. Um, I, I was just thinking connections in a broader sense. I wasn't sure if um it was meant to be something like sidewalks or something to be like a a, a city shuttle connection or something like that across the city. Um, and so I, I was just asking for a little more clarification specification. If you did mean those um pathways and those right of ways and those um sidewalks and trails and on the ground sort of connections as opposed to uh forms of connection.
Thank you. Tracy? You had your hand up.
I did, but it's not on this um policy. Do you want me to wait?
Any further comments on this policy that we're on three point two point one? Go ahead, Nathan.
Well, actually, I don't want to get into wordsmithing. Never mind.
And next point, Tracy?
Uh, I have a question on policy H three point two point four. Um, what can, I'm curious about why the word private is in here. Um, I guess it's part of the, it's one long sentence. And on the one, two, three thirds, third row down on mine, it says range of site and community benefits such as private and public open spaces and clauses, structured parking and other amenities.
Right, so the, the idea of private open spaces is that, is that some types of development higher density development include private spaces for residents.
For the residents.
On their properties.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Derek. Uh, Tracy, I think they want rooftop beer gardens.
Hey, Mike?
Can you? I hesitate to bring, bring up incentive bonuses after that comment. I think I might be in favor of that. Uh, I'm a little concerned with three point two point two. Uh, apply a minimum density to residential and mixed use development in the downtown period. Absolutely. That's, that's an important thought. But the next phrase, along with requirements for inclusion of affordable housing, certainly in favor of affordable housing, but I think a more effective way to get that rather than requiring it uh would be as we are in the next two policies, talking about how we would offer incentives uh to get to affordable housing. And that seems to be our strategy uh really going forward. But I would be in favor of deleting the phrase, along with requirements for inclusion of affordable housing. Uh, but just before somebody else calls me on this one, the last phrase where we have east of downtown in the area of TOD classification, require long term uh low cost housing as a condition of development. I think that's fine because as I understand it, uh, the zoning and density requirements within the TOD are already uh expansive uh and, and by themselves provide an incentive for that. So I think we've already accomplished that, that last call.
Lori, you give us some of your wisdom.
Yeah, so the only thing I wanted to mention was that this policy was crafted thinking about expanding the TOD requirements to downtown. So remember that the charge was to look at expanding the TOD. We're not really expanding the geographic area um by creating the, a bigger map for the overlay area, but one approach that we could take would be to put those uh density allowances, a minimum of sixty dwelling units per acre, uh up to a hundred and fifty uh dwelling units per acre. With affordability requirements. And again, it would be the same affordability requirements as in the TOD, which caps it at the requirement at ten percent of uh the units. So that's why this is in here because it was my understanding that you wanted to take those TOD density and affordability standards and move them to the downtown. But this is a really important point. Um, and, and uh, and in fact, this is a question that we'll ask the TOD panelists at your next meeting about their thoughts on this expansion. But if the commission has direction and wants to change direction here about the inclusion of affordable housing, then, then that really affects how we proceed with regulations.
No, Lori, that wasn't my intent. Uh, I think if you added language, a more expansive language there. Uh, so we're expressing that idea that we would include uh the same uh incentives and zoning requirements through the downtown area as have been established for TOD, I would be absolutely in favor of that. And that is with earlier discussion. I just didn't read that here.
Yeah, gotcha. It
We don't have the incentive. We have the requirement without the incentive.
Right. So is the rest of the commission comfortable and I'll rewrite that, really to more clearly reference the sort of the TOD standards.
We have consistent density and incentives.
And I'd just like to go back on record is I just, I'm not sure how we're going to be able or developers going to be able to afford affordable housing and make it permanent so that that doesn't change to um gentrification in about five to 10 years. Um, you know, it's been a lot of different types of suggestions on how to deal with that. And um, I think that's fine. But requirements for inclusion of affordable housing can be very difficult in some situations. Now I bet you the staff is just at the bite, ready to say something about that.
I, I don't think not including affordable housing in the TOD is an option. So I think that as it's currently in TOD regulations will move forward. And how do you ensure that once you have affordable housing that is maintained for a period of time? There are typically covenants that require it to be retained as affordable housing and those co- covenants are usually monitored for compliance.
So that requirement is in the administrative administrative code and the, the rules that our wonderful city puts out after this is all done.
In the sounding code, correct?
Hmm, yes.
I, you know, I, I think that's a big deal. Cause if you have them go away and, and I like to come in idea, but this is kind of a hot topic for me. Cause I've seen so much in, down in Seattle stuff that was built as affordable housing and it's no longer that. So I applaud every opportunity the staff has to tighten the, the uh it's not tighten the bolt, tighten the um screw on that one. Any other comments? Go ahead, Mario.
Um, in my comments on another policy, so is it okay to bring that up now or are you wrapping up? Okay, so it's with three point two five. And I think it's, it's back to our earlier conversation again, not wanting to wordsmith, but the, the usage of the word consider issues of diversity, equity and inclusion. Again, it's almost like to use what was said before, almost like a thoughts and prayers type of thing. And so I, you know, I, I just, I'm thinking if we're trying to have flexible but strong language throughout the document, then we should consider that in other places where words I consider are being used. And again, not because I'm trying to wordsmith, I can't necessarily think of a replacement um in this instance, but I also kind of have a follow up question for you, Lori and Debbie is like perhaps in your conversation with Shannon or maybe conversations amongst yourselves, like what what are you defining with regards to the kind of the issues that would be considered?
So I think when we're considering um locations of housing, that would be one thing.
Hello, hi.
Oh, you can't hear me again?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So when we're talking about diversity, equity and inclusion, I think we would look at existing communities in the downtown and there are several um uh communities that might come up in this conversation about a countywide growth center. I think we'd look at locations of housing. Um, access to transportation. Uh, sort of all of the issues that are part of the countywide growth center should be considered with an eye to how it might impact either uh existing communities or uh opportunities for new communities to come to the city. And I don't know how to go much farther than that. Um, I wonder if consider could be replaced by address? If that's better? I in this case, if you have a word, I'd love to hear it.
Well, like I'm saying, I, I wasn't trying to wordsmith and I didn't necessarily have a good replacement. I think address though, your suggestion is better because it's A, much more active. Right? And it actually means that you're going And it actually means that you're going to try to again figure something out, right? In order to mitigate the issue that might be arising from development. So I think wherever we can avoid passivity, I think we should strive to do that in, in this document.
Any further comments on this point? Is there any objections to wordsmithing? To include address a more active verb versus consider? Yes, none, then we're gonna move, are we moving to? What page? Well, we gotta go down to the bottom there. See, there's something, Nathan, you get to go first because Tracy's hand is really tired.
Thank you. Lori, I had a question on four point one point three. About making existing duplexes and triplexes. Another medium density housing legally conforming. Is that implying that they're also brought up to code in that process and meet the criteria within the city?
This is what I tried to clarify in the last phrase of that. It is not having to do with anything. Other than density and the land use. So minimum and maximum densities and lot size, but it doesn't address any of the other. Standards in the city that could be triggered as non-conformances. So. Does that help? What I'm trying to do is say they're going to become conforming as to just a few characteristics. And all the others, they may be conforming or they may be non-conforming, but for these few things, they would be. Considered conforming if they were a higher density, if the lot size was too small, if it was a housing type. That was pre-existing but wouldn't be permitted now. It's a way to make those. Existing structures that don't fit our current zoning mold, okay.
But that's just in regards to this, but they could still be non-conforming when it comes to code.
Correct.
Building code is what you're referring to, right?
Right.
Yes, yes. More of the, the safety aspect and definition wise for the city in terms of. Making sure duplex is a duplex and you know, all the. But thank you for clarifying that.
Need to find a better way to write this because everybody, Debbie just told me earlier today when she was looking at code amendments. I don't understand this, so I need to work on how to say this in a way that's more easily understandable.
Okay, Derek.
Uh, yeah, just to beat this a little bit more, for layman's terms for me. Are what you're proposing Lori in this verbiage is that we're essentially grandfathering currently existing ones. Into that land use.
Right. Just related to, for example, if there were a fourplex in a neighborhood that had been there for twenty years. It's currently non-conforming and there are going to be rules about what it can and can't do, or they, you might have to go through a zoning permit. Process to address some aspect of it, when in fact, the neighborhood's used to it, it's been there forever. Why put them through an additional hurdle when we actually want to keep that density? So that, that's the preferred outcome. I mean, that's the desired outcome.
Perfect, thank you.
Go ahead, Tracy.
This is on that same policy. So what does this mean then for that lot going forward in perpetuity or as long as? Things stay the way that, that, that we rate them now.
So what it means is that the existing structure would be. For purposes of density would be okay. There wouldn't be special rules for it because it's non-conforming. If someone were to tear down the existing structure, then the current rules apply. So. Is, is that where you're getting at?
That, that is what I'm getting at, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, and, and so. I guess I'm trying to puzzle out why we need to make them. Leg- legally form, like what, what hardship is it posing for those structures that they're legally not conforming?
It, it has to do with alteration of the structure. Maybe they want to somehow modify the structure and in. Under current conditions, they would have to go through a review process, a zoning permit process. It, it, the purpose of the non-conformance rules is to. Minimize what can be done to an existing structure. You basically want the existing structure to go away. That's why you make it a non-conformance, you make it harder for it to continue to operate. And I don't think that's the goal of these pre-existing missing middle housing types, for example. I think the goal is they're already there, let's support them in their continuation, not, let's not make it harder. For them to continue to operate.
Okay, so in some, I, I think I'm with you, but I just want to make sure. In some, say for, I mean, use a concrete example, say there is a fourplex in an R1. It's, it's legally non-conforming. So we decide we're going to make it legally conforming for its life, for the life of that building. Then someday, when that building gets torn down, it's still R1, so they couldn't build another fourplex.
Right, unless the rules were.
Unless the rules changed.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
And, and the other thing I might point out is, as, as Nathan pointed out, this is. A non-conformance related only to the use, and I'll use an environmentally sensitive area. Example, so say it is a legally non-conforming fourplex. On a site with critical areas, and they want to do something to it that would encroach further into the critical area. It, it's, it was non-conforming to the critical area rules and they wanted to approach more, no, not okay. They're still legally non-conforming as to that standard and they can't, you know, they can't make that. Increase that non-conformance.
Okay, any further comments? So I do have a question for you in this, I would think this would come up once in a while. So if the building that, whatever structure we're talking about, dwelling. Upon city study of that dwelling, they were to find out it was never permitted. Or inspected when it was built. What is it subject to then?
It's an illegal non-conformance and it has no rights whatsoever.
I just wanted to be clear about that.
Yeah.
Can you put that in? To make it very, I mean, I, I could see some people thinking about that. If you drive around our city, there's some. Fuddy-duddy little structures that I'm sure were never permitted, but I think I'm just. Going down a rabbit hole, so any other comments on this page? Hearing none, we're off to page five. Okay, I, I just knew you were just waiting. I saw that smile on your face, Tracy.
Thank you for reading for me, Dwight. This is policy H one point four, and I think it's very similar to the other discussions, the preceding discussions we've had about the word consider. I was looking for a stronger action verb, and the one that I wrote down was take measures. And I can, Maria, what did you say for the last one? It was sort of an A.
Credit for it, it was.
Oh, it was Lori, Lori said the dress, yeah. Yeah. I, I think moving toward this more active language is, is giving me the sense that our community is really valuing these things. I think that's what it is. So if, yeah, that's a suggestion I would make for that policy.
Is there any objections to that suggestion? Hearing none, more items on page five. There we go, Mike.
Four point two point two. And I will acknowledge this is somewhat picky point, I'm reading this, I'm not sure, is this a policy or a strategy? Are we specifically calling out as a policy that the city will work with Arch? To the exclusion of any other, or I'm not sure why we'd call out a specific. Entity out there.
I, I think we've called it out because we've historically belonged to Arch.
I think maybe Mike's further idea that it kind of got along my lines is. Maybe it'd be better to participate with an organization.
To, to help develop, yeah.
Yes, or such as Arch or something like that. So I, I, I can see the perspective that it sort of gives a. A monopoly to Arch to, to work with us and restricts us.
Well, Arch is us. We've had this conversation many times. Arch is a coalition of local governments, it is funded by local governments, its board belongs, is local governments. And Kenmore is one of the thirteen local governments that is part of Arch.
Right, right.
So it, it's not like a private organization, a nonprofit, a development community. Company, it's not like that. Arch is a government entity supported by the city of Kenmore. And governed by the city of Kenmore. In part.
In part, yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, are we off to page six? Yes, we are. Page six, folks. Getting quieter as we go. Any comments last, going once? Going a third time, okay. Hearing none. We're gonna go to page seven. Okay, after appropriate moment of silence. Is there any further, oh, there you go, Tracy.
Here I am, sorry, I.
It's okay.
Yeah. This is an implementation strategies. It's the third bullet point, adopt development standards for reduced minimum lot sizes with maximum house size restrictions. Which I think we've talked about in past meetings, and I'm not commenting on that part. And consider cottage housing in some low and medium density classifications. My concern is about the low density classifications. I have been. Protective of our R1 and R4 zoning because I know that they are protective of our critical areas like our wetlands and our steep slopes. It feels like it's one of the. Tools to use to protect the environment, and so thinking about increasing density in those areas makes me feel nervous.
Further comments? So your proposal would be to strike the. What is exactly your proposal, I was gonna say, so that I, I clearly understand you want to take out below.
Low, I would take a low.
Did I make a different suggestion? Because. R6 is another implementing measure of low density. Remember, R6 in our table appears in two places. It appears in low and it appears in medium. But we could say in some low and medium density classifications, not. Like not designed to address critical areas protection, or, or we could somehow. Qualify that, or. We could say in. Put some qualifier on it, so it's clear that it's only R6 that we're talking about.
Right, and I, I now reading this, I think that maybe you tried to do that with some. Yeah, and it wasn't satisfying for me, I suppose.
Yes.
So maybe, yeah, maybe a different qualification would, would be nice.
Mike.
Would it be too simple to say in some low parentheses, R6 in parentheses?
Well, that's a good idea.
Not be clear, Mike.
Okay, now that accountant comes out in the, I try suppressing, but sometimes it's hope.
Are we good with that suggestion then? Oh, I see heads nod, that's a really good sign, so. So R6, got it. Okay, further comments on page seven? You know what comes after this is page eight. So we're on to page eight, and this is a very short page, folks. On the timeline, we're doing much better than two weeks ago, so. Yes, Derek, oh, you're just happy. Good, that's good. We like new commissioners to be happy and try to stay on the timeline. That's great.
This timeline would be much improved, but I was actually just signaling to an employee to go ahead and lock me in the building and don't. If they set the motion alarm with me locked in the building. It's a sticky situation.
It's a very low density problem. All right, any comments on page eight? Is there any?
I, I actually do have a comment and, and I'm not quite. I, I do have one comment and I'm not quite sure if it's necessarily to be addressed in this document or how it would be addressed. But the question, and it's the second to last bullet of monitoring housing needs. And supply over time, especially data that evaluates progress towards meeting a proportionate share of the countywide needs for affordable housing and improved access to opportunity. For BIPOC communities. And again, monitoring is good, but what happens if in monitoring? We determine that we are not meeting our goals?
Debbie or Lori would like this, make a suggestion on that.
I'm sorry, Dwight, I couldn't understand you well.
No, I was asking Debbie or Lori if they had a comment on your question.
I, I think what you would do in that case is you would sort of reassess or readjust. So if you weren't meeting your goals, then you would have to reassess and readjust. Maybe those aren't the right words, but that's sort of the mechanics of it.
So how do we make sure that happens?
Can add in a sentence at the end of that implementation measure. Would be one approach.
You might have to say that whole sentence again.
Okay, I said we could add that reassess and readjust goals, objectives and policies of this element. If. If necessary, or if, I, I can't think of the words right off the top, but we could add something about there about the action. To follow if monitoring is not achieving our goal.
You're volunteering to wordsmith that.
I am.
To meet Mario's. Concern.
About action, right?
Okay, is everybody okay with that? Head nods are just sufficient at this point. Okay, if there's no other, there's no other comments on page eight, so any? there's no other comments on page eight, so any one that wants to look back and bring something they missed back up? Okay, is everybody in agreement with those things that we discussed tonight and gave direction to staff? Yes, great. All right, um staff, before I give it to the commission, do you have any further items you would like to bring up? Thank you for giving us that outline of next in two weeks. That's really good. It helps all of us get prepared. Uh is there any um any items for the good of the order from the commissioners? Yes, Tracy.
And I know that public gets notice of these meetings, uh you know, routinely. I'm wondering if there will be a special fireworks came to mind about the meeting next week because it's a special presentation. Maybe it might be of interest for the community also to hear those things. Is there anything special planned to promote that? I don't know, like special email or or is it just going to be the normal promotion?
I guess
Don't do actual fireworks. That's we don't need to do that.
I guess I was anticipating a regular promotion uh which would then go out to our planning commission mailing list. There, I think there are about forty seven hundred people on that list. And also I'm asking and and the assistant city manager or city manager have confirmed that they will bring it up at the Kenmore Business Alliance meeting, just to alert attendees there that this will be going on. Um but beyond that, I hadn't anticipated any other special announcement.
Sometimes just like a nice graphic gets people's attention, like this special meeting is happening. I don't know, I just because it's special, I thought maybe people might want to be increased participations, increased civic participation, I guess is what I'm hoping for.
We can follow up with our communication person with the city and Rita is also on that team, so between between the three of us will remember to
Do some kind of non-firework fireworks.
Mario?
Yes.
Derek actually had his hand up, so I'll
Go ahead.
It's just kind of in connection to Tracy's question and and I guess also just in touch and base with communications um and 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 maybe also with Rita around in doing the, I guess, marketing push for lack of a better term. Are we doing it, you know, translated in language? Are we doing it? Are we providing access to, you know, in different ways, so whether it's in rail or if it's flyers, I don't know if it's actual physical flyers. I I feel like I've been stuck in the virtual world for too long, that I don't know if there's anything tangible any longer, but um but I'm just thinking again about accessibility to um the meeting and to the information that's been provided, so um I think whatever we can do to increase that reach, um I would I would I would appreciate it. And then just second, I wanted to say thank you and and give again much appreciation to you, Laurie and Debbie uh for helping it, walking us through and all of our questions on the housing element. Uh really, really appreciate you all.
Any further comments for the good of the order? Derek?
Uh yeah, along the uh aspect of promoting this stuff, is it inappropriate for us to share on our own social media accounts? That hey, there's a meeting coming up and or is that something we should shy away from?
I don't think there's anything from a public meeting standpoint that says that you can't promote a city event on anybody's social media. I would be careful about pushing a particular um interest or policy. I'm just going there because some people may not know this, but when you, if you were to do that, you may you may end up disqualifying or having to accuse yourself when it comes to voting on certain aspects of the of aspects of of what we do. That's just a possibility. I'm not saying it would happen.
Yeah, no, I'm just asking if it's appropriate just to share the date or time, where to find it. Let people know that there is this exciting TV show out there that they can view into every two weeks. I mean
Well, I'm gonna make a sign and put it right on your front lawn so that everybody knows that you'll be on your side. So, that's good. All right, um oh, Laurie has a final word to say.
Well, I I just wanted to say uh one thing about the TOD panel, which is that uh we are inviting and in your um uh agenda packet, I'll let you know who all these folks are that we're inviting. But we are inviting a number of people who either have or are in the process of wanting to develop a project in the TOD. And uh we will be stressing that this conversation is not about a single particular project and how we can make that project more viable, because these rules apply to a broad area. And so um if we have a panelist, for example, who wants to say, talk about they won't do this, but they want to talk about parking on their particular site because for whatever reason, it's like, no, that's not, we're here to talk about it in a broader context. And we'll be letting them know and we're just so happy that they're willing to come and give up their evening to talk to us about TOD. Um but I I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you very much. Uh Mike?
Question, Debbie or Laurie, will one of you act as a moderator for this group to make sure we stay within those kind of bounds and things move along?
Yeah, we will. We will figure that out. And just just so that you know, that there currently is a moratorium in effect in the TOD overlay area, so no development is permitted. But on February fourteenth, the council are considering action to adopt interim regulations. Which means that um in so development could occur under certain circumstances. And under circum- under certain circumstances, knowing that the planning commission are working on these regulations. So it's kind of opens up the box a little bit, but not fully. It opens up the box if you are consistent with the TOD direction. It would not allow things like townhomes, for example. That is specified in the interim regulation. So I just wanted to kind of let you know that um that's what's kind of going on with the council right now, but they anxiously waiting to hear from you with your recommendations on the TOD.
Hey, Mike?
Uh so Debbie or Laurie, as part of your moderator role, will you give a little preamble here that mentions what you just did, plus maybe a synopsis of what the TOD is? I think we may have some, a range of people tuning in who may not have a complete idea of what this is all about, so framing that for for other folks as well as ourselves and some of our newer members in particular would be helpful.
Right. So if there's no further discussion on behalf of the commission, I'd like to thank Laurie and Debbie for all their hard work and second meeting in a row with a nice, long document with lots of changes to discuss and sitting through us and being very patient. Uh we greatly appreciate that. And I want to say thank you for, to all the commissioners for hanging in there and and getting to the very last line of the last page. And this time we're not having to ask for extensions of our nine o'clock deadline. It's eight forty. And with with that said, I adjourn this plan commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwight. Good night.
Good night, everyone.